Well, in the order they appear here, we have Roger Eddy, who is the Executive Director of the Illinois Association of School Boards. Next to him is Jesse Ruiz, who's Vice President of the Chicago Board of Education. Shrewd enough to bring his wife here. And of course, we have G2 Brown, National Director of Journey for Justice Alliance. I think what we'll try and do, and go in the order that you guys are here, we have three people, doing the math real fast, like six to seven minutes or less, maybe a little more. Opening statement, and then we'll have questions from the audience. Make sure you sign your name. No anonymous questions. Sandbag all you like, but at least have enough guts to put your name to it. And we'll keep a lively conversation. So with that underway, let's have Roger Eddy start the panel. I mean, the discussion.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I know you have the bio. I just, in the interest of disclosure, also want to add that I was a member of the Illinois General Assembly for almost 10 years. We often battled with this issue. In fact, the bills were introduced on several occasions related to the topic, so I bring that perspective as well. Currently, I am the Executive Director of the Illinois Association of School Boards. We represent well over 99% of the school districts in the state of Illinois. IAASB does not have an official position on the issue, which makes me very happy.
Makes me very happy, too.
The mission of our association is to provide our members with services that will help them to govern school districts in a manner that helps provide students with a quality education. Our mission does not include picking and choosing who we help. So all school boards in the state are eligible for membership, and in fact, the city of Chicago is also a member of the School Board Association. It might be interesting to know that all school boards in Illinois are elected school boards at this point, except for three. One is the city of Chicago, as I've mentioned. Another is North Chicago, which operates under an independent authority, which was established several years ago and appointed by the State Superintendent of Schools. Another is in East St. Louis. And the East St. Louis situation is kind of interesting because it was also an independent authority oversight that was appointed by the State Superintendent. The elected officials there took the state to court in that case, and what resulted was the independent authority staying, but also the elected board members staying, and there was an agreement as to how they would govern together in that situation. So everything else in the state is an elected school board. Now, you probably also know that in the last couple of years, the State Board of Education has also proposed legislation that would increase the number of districts that might be under independent oversight or independent authority. And what happened over the last couple of years is our position evolved from that of pretty strong opposition to one of neutrality. And in fact, during the fall veto session, a bill passed that would allow for independent authorities in a capped number of additional school districts. But it also took into consideration governance issues and not simply 5% lowest-performing school district by student achievement standards. So this entire issue is one we're very interested in, one that's evolving, and one that, if you look at research across the country, is something that is of interest in other cities. There are a number of instances where some type of appointed and/or hybrid of an appointed school board or governance board takes place. New York City, one of those most notable, but also many other urban centers. One that comes to mind is Cleveland, where actually, in Cleveland, it took place because of a court order regarding desegregation of the city schools. So for a variety of reasons across the country, there has been a model of this type of governance. Now, in Illinois, you know that since 1995, the mayor has had the authority to appoint the school board. At the time, it was a five-member school board. And then in 1999, the General Assembly revisited the issue and made it a seven-member board, which it is today. So again, I think as a member of the General Assembly and as a person who is working with the 6,000 elected school board members in the state, plus the seven appointed school board members in the city of Chicago, we see obviously the benefits of, in some cases, an appointed board, and we also strongly believe in what in over 90% of our members' cases are those in elected position. I look forward to the discussion and the debate, and hopefully, we'll be able to ferret out some of those specific issues related to those pros and cons during the conversation. Thank you again for having me.
Okay. Round of applause. And Roger, we will not hold it against you that you were a state rep, don't worry. However, it has been duly noted. Jesse, five to seven, six to seven minutes, whatever.
I'll be brief, because I look forward to the discussion. Obviously, I'm a bit biased. I'm an appointed school board member, and prior to this appointment, I was also appointed Chairman of the State Board of Education for six and a half years and served in that capacity. And in fact, one of my last acts before transitioning to the Chicago School Board was vote, taking that difficult vote to take over the East St. Louis, to authorize the superintendent to take over the East St. Louis school district because of the many issues it was facing. We also, one you didn't mention was Calumet Park, was another district that we had to bring in oversight and basically oversee operations for that board that frankly wasn't doing its residents and its students' justice in their operation of that school district. And so I bring almost, well now, more than 10 years of appointed school board service to this perspective, and in this city, and I worked in that capacity with the over 800-plus elected school boards that we have in the state of Illinois. Happy to be on the board of the Illinois Association of School Boards with my colleagues, whom are all elected officials in the state and their respective school districts. But for our city, I honestly do believe that it would be best left as it is as an appointed school board, because it's incredibly complicated, diverse district. There are very difficult decisions to be made, and sometimes, you know, not very popular decisions. And I would have to, I'd hate to have to worry about my next election when making a vote. I never worry about that. I've never had to worry about that, or worry about who I'm, you know, pleasing or unpleasing with my vote. All I worry about is what's best for the students in the city of Chicago. And so therefore, that's the system that I prefer. We have a hybrid system, in fact, in Chicago. We have elected local school councils now. Not every single one of the slots is filled. We have about 5,700 students, parents, teachers, community members, not students, rather, parents, teachers, community members, that are members of those bodies that frankly have a lot of authority. They pick the principal. They choose to engage the principal of that school building, and they choose to enact what is now their own budget. We have now moved to student-based budgetings to give more autonomy to the schools, and they can choose how they choose to spend those funds, along with the principal in forming their budgets. So at times, we have school board meetings, and you'll hear, "Well, we don't have this, we don't have that." But the fact of the matter is, that local school council and that principal made those choices on how to allocate those funds. Now, do we have all the funds in the world we'd like to send to those schools? No. That's another topic and another discussion about how we fund education in the state. And Lord knows, I engaged in that many a times while on the State Board of Education. And I look forward to engaging our current governor and holding him to his promise on making sure that we have additional state funds for our school district in Chicago.
Round of applause.
Indeed. And I look forward to being here and posing that question to him when he's here sometime soon, that we have to, as residents of Chicago, hold to that promise and make sure we get the additional resources. We can't be 48th out of 50th states in the nation in terms of our state support for school funding. And we can't continue to pay into two different pension funds in the city of Chicago, where we're both supporting the teacher retirement system in Illinois, which is the pension fund system for all other teachers, as well as our own Chicago Teacher Retirement Fund. My colleague Andrea Zopp is here, and she serves double duty as both the trustee on that pension fund board and on the Chicago Public School Board. And so for those reasons, that we have a local school council that gets the input of communities, that they get to elect those representatives who directly operate their schools, and that we have accountability. Frankly, we wouldn't be having this discussion here today if you didn't have ultimate accountability. It's because it's become a part of our mayoral election, and that's what it's supposed to be, that you get accountability, the voters get accountability, because they know darn well who appointed me, and Andy and the others on the school board. And it's part of holding that person accountable. In a district that our size, with a $5 billion budget, with six, almost close to six if you look at capital, with almost 400,000 students, with, you know, what I called, you know, multiple districts within a district, of different issues and different concerns in every community, it's a very, very large and difficult operation to manage. And so I'm glad that it's one person's overall responsibility and their accountable to the voters, and students, and parents, and teachers of the city of Chicago, to make sure that they're putting individuals in those positions who will manage the operations to the best of their abilities, taking into consideration all the input that we hear, and sometimes the, you know, it's 50/50. And what we have to do is try to focus on the issues at hand, focus on what's best for teaching and learning, and I'm proud that in the last three years, 10 months that we've been there, that the numbers are trending in the right direction. Graduation rates are up, attendance is up, test scores are up. And again, these things don't happen in isolation. It's not just the credit of the school board, it's all the professionals who stand in the classrooms every day, it's the parents and communities who are helping support those students. But I like to think that we're playing a role and a part of that, in helping the stewardship of the district and making sure we get through some of the turbulent times yet ahead, and not having to focus on campaigns and who's funding my election, and to be like Los Angeles, where millions of dollars are flowing across our country into campaigns to elect, I just don't think that's something that's beneficial to the students of Chicago and to ultimately the residents of Chicago.
Thank you, Jesse. Before we get to G2, round of applause, please. Because the city club is totally honest, it must be said that your moderator ran the local school council elections from 1996 to 2010. I am a veteran of the LSCs, and perhaps someday, we should talk about the LSCs, because for many people, they know very little about it, and I can only share with you that there wasn't very many, shall we say, highly turnout elections for LSC, where you had people having a chance.
There's another issue with elected school boards.
There you go. Well, there you go. Always honesty's the best policy, even if Jackie Robinson-Ivy left, nevertheless, even if she was here, I'd be saying it. G2, you're up. G2 Brown.
Yes, sir. Well, first, thank you for having me here today. I think this is an important conversation. I guess where I'll start is that I bring, I think, a different perspective to this issue. I lived in Bronzeville for many years, product of Chicago Public Schools, Go Broncos, Kenwood Academy, and really found my way in life working with children in Bronzeville, partnering as a volunteer with the Kenwood Oakland Community Organization, with schools like Einstein, Reviss, Fuller, Diet High School, and Price, at that time, Elementary School. And what I learned in that work, because I was happy just working with youth, trying to help young people find a leader within themselves, expose elementary school children to college, engage them in improving their own schools, I was really lucky to work with some very strong administrators during that time. And so I was a part of at least three successful school improvement processes. But I learned something in working with young people, that it wasn't just an issue of young people needing more support, there was a justice issue in many of our schools. I worked in schools where there were no computer labs, full elementary school, where the windows were so dirty, we had to mount a two-year campaign just to get clean windows. This is Albert Einstein Elementary. And this is my reality, what I observed working in these schools. And I was actually the Board President of the Kenwood Oakland Community Organization when we learned about the Mid-South Plan, which actually emanated, you know, from David Vitale and folks that were connected with the commercial club, to say they were going to close 20 out of the 22 schools in Bronzeville. But this is despite the fact that there were 17 other neighborhoods with lower test scores. This is despite the fact that many of the schools that were in Bronzeville were what you were calling schools of distinction at that time, Beethoven Elementary School, Jackie Robinson, and Woodson. And what I learned during that time, as we fought to just have a voice as taxpayers, the same voice that parents have that may live in Oakbrook, or the same voice that parents may have that live in the suburb of any major city, or in many major cities throughout this country, what we realized is that we didn't have a voice, that the realities or the truths that we experienced every day were not being heard, or reflected, or respected by the people that were sitting on the school board. And when they made decisions, if those decisions failed, which often they did, there was no accountability to the people who paid taxes. There was, you know, and it's easy to say, "Well, you can elect a mayor," but you have a mayor right now that has a $30 million war chest, a $30 million war chest. And so the game is rigged. The game is rigged. And so what we're saying is that there has to be accountability for failed education policies. Here's what we know. Here's what we know. This is not, you know, making this up, but we know that since, and this is Chicago Catalyst Magazine, December 7, 2011, they did a scope of all the school actions since 2002. It said that only 18% of the schools that have replaced closed schools perform well. That means despite the fact that these schools can pick the children they want, and most of them don't elect local school councils, because most of them either contract or charter schools, they can kick out the ones they want, they don't, through zero tolerance policies. Only 18% of those schools perform well. Now, you tell me, is that reform, or is that what Dr. Charles Payne calls, you know, mediocre interventions? And those mediocre interventions only accepted because of the race of the children that are being served. See, as a parent, as a person who has invested in children in Bronzeville, you can't tell me you love my kids and you don't respect my voice. Because the children, you know, these children come from neighborhoods. Many of the neighborhoods have issues, but many of the neighborhoods have glorious histories. Many of the neighborhoods helped shape Chicago. Bronzeville helped shape Chicago. And so now, there's this mountain of researchers piling up, not from the left, not from the right, but just from academic institutions, that say that this is not, that privatization is not the way. That in Chicago, 75%, you know, only one out of five children that attend charter schools outperform children that go to regular public schools. So how many hundreds of thousands of young people have been impacted by a policy where only 25% of the students are outperforming the children of regular public school? But here's the question. I raised with the current school board, and I raised with everybody in this room, have we made sure that there's an Agassiz in every neighborhood? Have we made sure that there are, that there is a Lincoln Tech available to every child in every neighborhood? Not a school with a particular title, STEM school, IB school, because we're good at that, but have we made sure that, just like the children at Agassiz, which is a neighborhood school in Lincoln Park, the children at Agassiz are studying Mandarin Chinese and Arabic, first grade through eighth grade? They have a world-class library. Every teacher has a teacher aide. But then you look at a school of a comparable size, Molson, on 44th and King Drive. There have been three different attempts to close this school, and despite that disruption, they've had six straight years of improved test scores. They had the model classroom for the entire region, but the school is so crowded, some of the children have to eat lunch in their classrooms. There's one teacher aide in the entire building. Who answers for that? See, there's an old African proverb says, "The truth is simple if it's complicated, it's a lie." So at the end of the day, good schools are not a mystery. And I'm no more sophisticated than anybody in this room, but my lived life experience has been taking Fuller School from 9%, along with Ms. Laverne Bailey, to being a rising star in a school of distinction. My lived experience was staying there after Arnie Duncan closed Inglewood and dumped 150 children inside of Diet. And in two years, Diet had the largest increase of students going to college in the entire district. There's school board members here right now that would not dispute that fact I just gave you. The question is, what's the response of the school district when the schools improve in our neighborhoods? And I think that would be a heck of a conversation.
Well, let's have it now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. There we go. If you have questions, we have several of them, several, almost most of them are the same, so let's get a little, where's our little, hold on. I've got five or six questions, basically the same, the same questions. Well, we know we could always start off with the discussion when you have a question from an alderman. I mean, that just starts at a high level, and we'll work our way up. Alderman Joe Moore, right over there from the Fighting 49s. Nice round of applause for you, Joe. I don't think we have many 49th warders here, but...
Well, they're just anxious to hear the question.
That's right. Thank you, Joe. Please, this is nonpartisan. Are there any academic, this goes to anybody, are there any academic studies which show a correlation between an elected or appointed school board and improved quality of education for our children? That's a damn good question.
Let Roger take that one.
All right, Jesse, go ahead.
No, I was going to let Roger do it, as can I... Let me tell you that I actually spent the last couple of days looking for research that would be conclusive, and the fact of the matter is, there isn't any. There is research that shows you cannot isolate the variable related to student achievement. Now, one thing that you might want to look at, the National School Board Association Center for Public Education has a document called Toward Collaboration, Not a Coup, which talks about and has some bibliography research study related to student achievement. Now, the one thing you have to understand is student achievement means different things in different cities. And it can mean just how kids do one day of the year on one test in some cities, it can mean graduation rate, multiple measures in some cases, in some cases, there isn't. But there isn't a consistent study that shows that there is a correlation necessarily between elected or appointed boards and student achievement. There are some very high-performing schools who have appointed boards, there are some student achievement gains in both. One thing that is kind of consistent is there seems to be in appointed school boards, especially in urban centers, additional dollars that make their way to the classrooms, and studies show there's a coordination of social services that may not take place without it coming from a central location. However, whether or not that, that kind of efficiency added to student achievement really wasn't something that was conclusive. I'll say one more thing related to the two other school boards in the state that are not appointed, or they're not elected right now. In both of those cases, East St. Louis and North Chicago, there is a commonality. They have received pretty significant additional dollars from the state of Illinois after the State Board of Education began the independent oversight. And our members, who don't receive those additional dollars, kind of wonder whether or not the fact that those additional dollars, which allow some types of programs and some types of resources to flow to the district, may be somewhat responsible for those student achievement gains, if they even are present. So unfortunately, there isn't anything that I can point to, but this study, if you're looking into this, might shed a little more light when you look into the bibliographies.
Could you give that to our editor, our tweet, our Executive Director, and he could put it online for anyone?
I will link it to you. This one is marked up pretty well.
Well, we want to see what you're saying.
Just one thing I could chime in is like, I mean...
All right.
You have my marked up copy.
All right, that's good.
You'll note the title of it is Toward Collaboration, and I think that's what folks are asking about and raising. I know that gets some frustration, particularly when we make difficult decisions that not everybody agrees with. But we do seek to be as collaborative as possible. You know, G2, the first time we met was when you brought a group of students to my personal office to talk about our student code of conduct, and I agreed with them. It was not ideal. You know, CPS was putting our students on a path to criminalization by getting them arrested in our schools, and we agreed that was not a good thing to be doing. And we agreed that we should address it, change it, and we should start monitoring it, publicizing those results for all schools, charters as well. Did we determine that charters have a higher incidence of suspending their students? Yes, we did. And are we going to call them out and keep an eye on it? Yes, we are. So there's one example where we need to continue to collaborate, elected or appointed, and you just have to be willing to listen and seek an optimal outcome, which I've always understood, without collaboration is not going to happen.
Yeah, Jesse.
I think there's a study released a couple of years ago, and I believe that there's a new one coming out by the University of Illinois Chicago, saying, "Should Chicago have an elected school board?" Here's what we, here's one thing we do know, is that when you look at the Broad Institute's training manual...
There it is.
There it is. Yeah, Jesse has. "Should Chicago..." So this was released in, what, 2012, or 2011?
Before I got on the board, I'll know.
Okay, okay. No, I'm still going to get you, but, but it talked about, you know, "Should Chicago have an elected school board?" But here's what we know, that the Broad Institute, which is sort of one of the major training grounds for administrators, for teachers that are moving into this privatization track, they say that an appointed school board is one of the necessary ingredients. So what I want to raise with the folks in this room is that you don't see appointed school boards in the hills of West Virginia. You don't see them in rural Tennessee, where you have a significantly poor white population. But you do see them in Baltimore. You do see them in Detroit. You do see them in Chicago. You do see them in Philadelphia. So we maintain the journey for justice, that this is a civil rights issue, because it is removal of our voting rights. People can raise our taxes, but we cannot hold them directly accountable for the policies they set. So when you listen, when you listen to the messaging by Chicago Public Schools, they'll say, "Well, this school was a failing school." But they won't tell you the story that I tell you about Diet, because there are details, there are lives, there's policy decisions that impact whether a school succeeds or fails. It's just marketing. They won't tell you, they'll say, "Well, Overton was a bad school." Well, Overton had three straight years of improved test scores, the last year, some of the largest in the city.
G2, we got a lot of questions. I don't want to cut you off, but you know, we got a lot of people...
No worries.
Taking time, and let's move it on. Martha Jantrow, a former, emphasis on the word "former," school board member, "If there is an elected school board, should members be elected bipartisan?" I'll add to it. Should they be elected bipartisan elections? Should there be districts? Should they be at large? Should they be paid? G2, what do you think about that? Calling for elected school board is one thing, but how would you implement it?
There's a coalition that we formed called Communities Organized for Democracy in Education, and we actually developed a, along with State Representative Will Gazzari, put your hand up, Representative Gazzari. We developed a proposal, which will be a bill in the state legislature this spring for an elected representative school board. We believe that it should be based on regions, elected out of four regions in the city. We believe it should be a 13-member school board. There are some major cities with as many as 19 or 20. We believe that there should be compensation for the school board, because the only people that can afford to serve on a school board for free are people that are wealthy. But if you have, if you have a salary provided for folks that provide that service, we think that makes sense. We believe that the school board should have certain responsibilities. They should, they should be knowledgeable about the schools that they make decisions on. They should know about local school councils, have relationships with local school councils. And so I think they should be trained in certain areas of education policy. What does restorative justice really mean, or is it just something that you've read? You know, where is restorative justice working? Where are community schools working? So we think that we should have an elected representative school board, they should be paid, and it should be representative of four major regions throughout the city of Chicago.
G2, let the moderator, this is because you're playing right to my Trump. Who would draw the districts? You may know Chicago in Illinois has a history of, shall we say, "The pencil is mightier than the sword."
Shenanigans.
Who would draw the districts, four districts? Who would draw them?
Well, I think that's something that can be, that can be worked out.
All right. When you get there, clue me in.
Well, let me say this, we have developed a proposal that we'd bring into the state legislature, so I think that that's a decision that has to be made between the state legislature and what role the alderman plays in that conversation. So I don't have all the answers for that, but we did start the conversation.
Sorry, I just, anytime someone talks in this state about districts...
And again, Paul, that's one of my primary concerns as a taxpayer and resident, lifelong resident of the city of Chicago, that I do have concern about inserting more politics into school board operation. Frankly, we tried to seal ourselves, well, you may laugh, but, you know, again, I don't have to raise a dime from anybody, I don't have to worry about my next campaign, frankly, I don't have to worry about when I'll, when I vote on a teacher contract that accounts for 40...
that accounts for 40% of our school budget, the CTU contract's a $6 billion line item in our budget, every three years. $6 billion. So if anybody who takes money from a union is gonna recuse themselves from that vote? I mean, that, that's a huge conflict, if, if you're having folks, you know, be elected by, with strong support of unions and then vote on that contract.
Well, here's my...
I don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, I got a question for you though, Jesse. How could it be more political than it is right now? I mean, honestly, you have the chief operations officer for Chicago Public Schools, who's the former CEO of the Academy for Urban School Leadership. You have the board president of the Chicago Board of Education, who was the former board president of the Academy for Urban School Leadership. They get schools with no bid contracts. They just, they just, they, and despite the fact that they've had to turn around their own turnaround in two high schools twice, they've had to turn around Phillips twice, they've had to turn around Orr twice. How could it be more, right now, right now, the mayor of Chicago was, this morning, was at Little Black Pearl, which is a politically connected arts organization, who has been, when we have been fighting like wet cats for Diet High School in Bronzeville, saying we do not want to lose our last open enrollment neighborhood high school, and the mayor is a, is beginning a political endorsement at an organization that is submitting an application for Diet. Do you actually think that we believe that this is fair? So, so how could it, how could it possibly be more polit, you just had a board member that was caught taking profits, taking her company, getting profits? So how could it be more political than it is right now?
Jesse, you want to respond to that?
Again, I mean, if we want to be like Los Angeles, that has compensated board members and spends millions and millions of dollars just sustaining a board, not educating kids, uh, and has millions of dollars flowing across the country into campaign funds, I frankly, we don't know what we're asking for. If you look at what's happening in those cities where you have millions of dollars spent by the unions, by millionaires in New York, by, in a Los Angeles school district, you know, and that's what would happen. And I'd rather not see that happen to my city and our schools.
Okay.
But Los Angeles has passed some, now, I'm not saying that they aren't issues, we say unions, but you could say unions, corporations, they're all private, they're all different interests. But what you can say is that Los Angeles has passed some of the most progressive education legislation in this country. The A through G legislation that says no matter where a child goes to school, they have to have curriculum that prepares them for college. We wouldn't have a Molson and a Agassiz in Los Angeles, but we have it in Chicago.
They do have those challenges.
They have it, but they're addressing, but they're addressing it. We're addressing it by closing schools and displacing families.
All right. The questions are coming in.
Their population's growing.
By the way, uh, for all the school board people, I am available for your school board meeting, because you see, I've got the tight ship I run here. It's turning into a faculty meeting. Okay. Speaking of, uh, Raymond, whoa, where are you, Raymond? Right. Uh, Chicago Teachers Pension Fund. Please discuss how a hybrid approach to CPS Board of Education would look. Basically, he's asking, if he had a hybrid, would it be two by the mayor, five elected, et cetera, et cetera? Do we have any details on that, or is that like sort of an elected school board? Just throw it out there and we'll draw it later.
That's been a model that's been proposed, that certain would be appointed, certain would be elected. Again, I like having all the members appointed, those are the two experiences I have serving on the State Board of Education. Certainly, yes, I do, because again, I see that it works well in a large urban city like, like Chicago, where you need a live team that's going to get the resources that the entire city has to bear, and it's not different, uh, fiefdoms and camps, because we're all, we would be elected from different, uh, factions and organizations. And, you know, we have a hybrid system. We've got elected school, LSE members, who, who decide on their budgets, who decide on their principles, and lord knows, they share their thoughts and opinions with us all the time.
Okay, let's just ask this question, this goes to both Jesse and, uh, to G2. This is from Joey McDermott. Joey, you, where are you? No more questions from you, you, you've reached your limit. All right. If we had an ele, I assume E R S B stands for elected school board? Gotcha. If we had an elected representative school board, this goes to Jesse and to G2, either one of you or both of you, would either of you run for the position? Do you think you would win? Now, Joey, that's a good city club question.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, I, you know, I would like to see it remain a non-paid position. Uh, I'm not sure if I'd run for it, frankly. And then you would get folks like, well, yeah, you'd be, you'd be rid of me, but you'd also be rid of, you know, a lot of folks who may not want to do that. And then again, you look at, I mean, I know some of the folks in LA Unified, uh, and, um, you know, some folks there who may be looking for a job. I'm not looking for a job, I'm looking to help. Uh, you know, again, I grew up in the Roseland community of Chicago, where my mother is still there for 50 years, and when I want to go visit mom, that's where I go. I live in Wicker Park today, but that's where my life and my family, my nieces, nephews, and all, live in Roseland. And so that's what I, my perspective is. I want to see Roseland schools, just like in Bronzeville, uh, you know, there were challenges when I was growing up, and there continue to be challenges. And, you know, you just talked about the inequities in our system. Yeah, if I could, you know, somebody once asked me on a panel, what was one thing, uh, as a panel, we could do to eradicate all of education's problems in Chicago? And one member said we should charter the whole system. Uh, you know, frankly, I thought it was a very dumb answer from a very intelligent guy. Um, but, you know, my answer would be, if I could eradicate poverty, we would go a long way, but that's, you know, again, I'm a realist. And how do you eradicate poverty? You know, you educate children. You give them the ability to go and earn a living better than I did from my, you know, third-grade educated dad who was a migrant farm worker. You know, that he could do that, have his son go to law school, stutter, study under the President of the United States, and then be able to make a better living than he did. That's the goal for everybody, and that's my goal in serving on the Chicago School Board. Would I pursue it as an elected office? I'm not sure I would, or would you?
G2, quickly, would you run for it?
I, I, I mean, I don't know. I, I, you know, I, I think that I want to see it, I want to see it come to pass, not so that I can have a position, just so that, you know, thousands upon thousands upon thousands of families, not only in Chicago but across the country, through my work with Journey for Justice, I, I've been really blessed to work with organized mothers and fathers and young people all over this country, cities like New Orleans, who tell a very different story than what the media says about New Orleans. You know, uh, cities like Philadelphia, where students, not being propped up, but students elevating their own voice, got arrested because they realize that they're closing 27 schools is not good for them. Um, all over this country, there are people who are saying that they don't have a voice. Since 1995 in this city, we have not had a voice in what happens in public education. But, uh, uh, parents from other communities do enjoy a voice. When they say jump, the school board says, "How high?" We gotta, we gotta work to get a 15-minute meeting with the school board. So I think that there has to be, you know, you know, when people directly impacted tell you, "This is hurting me," the collective response can't be, "Well, but, okay, but." At some point, you know, there has to be a humility in your service. And that humility has to be, listen to the people who have to live with the policies you set, and work with them. I, I would be more than happy to go down to Springfield and, and, and it would be much stronger of a fight if we actually felt there was a school board that listened and respected our voice. Then, yeah, we feel busted to go down to Springfield and fight for equitable education funding. But I'm not gonna do it now when I know that it's gonna fuel privatization. Why? Because if we go and get more money from the state, Chicago Public Schools is already changing its infrastructure. You have, you have an issue with Chicago Public Schools. You have either a values crisis, or a capa, or, or, or a capacity crisis, where they are getting out of the neighborhood schools business.
Okay, G2, we, I don't want to cut you off, but, you know...
That's okay.
Art is long and time is fleeting. Uh, we have a lot of questions, and I, this will be the last question, and whoever wants to jump up, I'm gonna be paraphrasing, as the moderator, I paraphrase, and hopefully I won't screw up. A lot of these questions deal, excuse me, with the issue of race. Yet somehow, there is a racial component, a big racial component in the, uh, this debate about elected or appointed school boards. And one, a couple people said, you know, you, only in the white areas you have elected school boards, and you're closing them, and appointed in black areas. As a South suburbanite, I could only say that there are many school districts now that are majority African-American. And as people move out of the city, the race issue out in the South suburbs, it becomes less of a black-white, it's more evenly distributed. So I'm really concerned about, which, because when you throw in race, that's like throwing fuel on a fire, and it explodes. Is there, on appointed or elected school board, really a racial issue when 85% of the students in Chicago, of all these schools, are African-American or Hispanic? Is there really a racial issue? I mean, that's, that's a summary of all the questions, yell at me, I try my best to get everybody in. Yes, go ahead.
In a city like Chicago, I think it would be naive to not think that race is a factor in some of these discussions, which, you know, also coincides with our, you know, coincidentally, the fact that we're about 90% Hispanic and African-American school district, and the fact that we're about the same thing, 90% children living in poverty, is, is, is a problem, that those children are the ones who are living in poverty. And so that's our biggest challenge, that, you know, is race a factor? Of course. Uh, but if you look at the board, the board is diverse and represented from, from the city, there are African-American and Hispanics members of the board as well. Um, but yes, of course it is. I mean, that said, it, it occurred to me, the, the one, you know, district that's, has an elected school board down, down in the South suburbs, and was one of the first, in fact, because we had to vote on it in the State Board of Education, Blondine Davis, Blondine Davis, who was, uh, a student, school superintendent down in the South suburbs, and she wanted to have a charter school in her neighborhood, in her district. And, uh, wasn't popular, but she appealed to the State Board of Education and got her charter school. And just, again, people forget now, there's a new regime in the state of Illinois, where if CPS doesn't approve charters, the state can. So we're, CPS can decide, "We're never gonna charter another school," and the state can charter them all day long. And so, um, it's not necessarily just our choice anymore either.
G2, quickly, quickly summarize it so we know.
I think, um, if you look around the country and you see where there are appointed school boards, it's overwhelmingly in districts of color. I think to deny parents, community residents, the right to hold public officials accountable for their decisions, to me, is a violation of the Voting Rights Act. And we're, we're digging into that to see, you know, whether that has standing. I believe in my heart of heart, it, it does. I think, um, at the end of the day, we have to look at the last 20 years in public education in Chicago, when the mayor's had ultimate authority, and has, has education gotten better? Look at the NAEP exam scores, and we know that in Chicago, the scores are basically flatlining, and that alternative schools have exploded under this, under this philosophy of education. So for many children in this city, the alternative school is their neighborhood school. To me, that's not civil rights. To me, that's not opportunity. To me, what you're doing is getting rid of the children who may, who might be a little more difficult to educate, so that what you, what you present looks a little more attractive at the end of the year. And I, and we talked about several schools, uh, Noble Street Charter School, we talked about, uh, we've talked about Urban Prep. Some of these schools have some of the highest suspension and expulsion rates in history, in history. And, but that's not in the narrative when we're talking about them, we're holding them up like they're the secret sauce. That's just honest. It might not be popular, it might not align with some folks' interests, but that's the truth. Because young people that get kicked out of Urban Prep come to our office. And so at some point, we have to stop the hustling, and we have to start educating.
Okay, very good. Roger, you want to close your comment?
The, the only thing I would add, and this is, goes back to the question related to, uh, elections, partisan, nonpartisan. It, it disappoints me when, when I hear the concerns related to elections always coming back to the same topics. First of all, money, and how money, uh, is really, I don't care which election it is, such an important component that, uh, it, it gets in the way of whether or not someone is going to run, or someone is gonna get elected ultimately. And that's too bad. The other thing is maps, and determining a fair mapping system, so that we can make